Five, and we are now beginning the study session for the city of Palm Desert. We will have a study session topics on the proposed Chukwala National Monument, the update for Palm Desert's general plan for mobility elements, and information regarding library policies. Mr. City Manager, what are we hearing first?
Why don't we start with the Chukwala National Monument discussion if we're ready to go? I'll have to defer to Anthony whether, okay.
Yeah, if you want to.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to be with you for hopefully a few minutes this afternoon. I just wanted to give you an update and a little bit more information about kind of the latest news with the proposed Chukwala National Monument. My name is Katie Barrows. I live in La Quinta and I'm a volunteer with Protect California Deserts Coalition, which is involved in this effort. And I know you've already seen this in your agenda packets, so I'm going to go through it very quickly. Let's see. That goes that way. Top arrow? There we go. That makes sense. Okay. So essentially, a national monument is a way that the federal government has of protecting federal lands that are recognized for significant values, scientific research, ecological values, cultural resources, and historical values. And this is an effort that a group of organizations, some local, some larger, have been involved in for the last number of years, working with our congressional delegation to gain their support and then moving forward as we go along, and I'll come back to that in just a moment. These are ecologically, historically significant, and the proposed Chukwala actually has a number of those values. Just briefly, an overview, it includes actually two different parts. One of those is the establishment of about 620,000 acres of existing Bureau of Land Management land. So it's BLM land now, and it would stay BLM land. And then about 17,000 acres of land that is a part of or within the boundaries of Joshua Tree National Park that would be actually managed by the National Park Service. It's currently BLM. It would be transferred just for management purposes to the National Park Service. It turns out that Congress is the only way that we can get the, actually designated as a national park. And let me just show you the overall map that gives you an idea of the area that's involved. This area with the sort of green boundary is the proposed national monument. It's a large area, actually comes right up against almost the city limits of Coachella. Mecca, we see as a kind of a gateway community. I'm hoping that this will be a beneficial situation for the town of Mecca. And it goes almost to the Colorado River, so there's some really spectacular areas within that. I'm going to give you a very quick view of those. I just want to note that this map reflects some changes that have been made over the last, actually, number of years in coordination and consultation with various interest groups and utilities and others. And I'm going to give you a little more detail on that in just a moment. So overall, there are some kind of key provisions. This would only apply to federal BLM land. So within that boundary, there are private lands, there are state lands, there are some water district lands, and those are not affected by the designation as it goes. So that would really only apply to the BLM lands. And most of it is federal BLM land. Rights away, utility corridors would all be not impacted. It is compatible with a pump storage project, and I didn't go backwards. Is that, yeah, I'm sorry. Up in the top where you see the purple pointer, there we go. That's moving a little. There we go. Well, I'm not sure I can use the primary. It was kind of purple in the middle of Joshua Tree National Park. There we go. There, right up there by the hand. Kind of right above the hand. Sorry. That is the addition to Joshua Tree National Park. It's about 17,000 acres. Thank you. It was part of a study that the Park Service did a number of years ago. It has been identified there is existing private land in that sort of little curved in area that is part of a potential pump storage project, and those two situations or boundaries or uses have been identified as compatible. The pump storage folks are aware of this proposal and are okay with it. And that would be the one where it's currently BLM. It would be transferred to be managed by the Park Service. Okay, so then I wanted to also mention, one of the other aspects of this, it was important in drawing the boundaries, was to avoid, as you may be aware, there's significant lands identified for renewable energy out in the east part of the county, and those areas would be completely outside of the boundary. There's significant outreach and actually negotiations that have gone on with the renewable energy industry and with Southern California Edison to ensure that there wasn't any concerns on their part. And that's why I wanted to share this next map, which is a little bit more colorful. This kind of actually is projected with a satellite imagery. So you can see over on the east area, Lith. And then what I wanted to point out is actually some boundary adjustments have been made, and some of those fairly recently. This kind of bounces around. I'm apologizing for not being able to make this work. I can't get it to point. Yeah, you're good. You're good. But in essence, there is actually a utility corridor towards the northern part of the boundary along the I-10 that was identified for Southern California Edison. And some setbacks and adjustments were made. We actually eliminated about 40,000 acres from the total proposal to address concerns by Metropolitan Water District, Coachella Valley Water District, Edison, and other utilities. So I think we've really come to a great understanding and working partnership with them. The other things are, this is not a wilderness area. There are legally designated off-highway vehicle routes, jeep trails, that would remain in place at the time of designation. Many of the existing recreational uses such as hunting, rock hounding, hiking, actually bicycling, all of those things, we're really seeing this as a tremendous opportunity for more outdoor recreation. One of the changes that does occur is that new mining claims would not be allowed. So it would actually withdraw new mining claims. Existing mining claims that are valid can go forward, but there wouldn't be any new mining claims. So that's a prohibition that comes with a national monument.
Sure. Rock hounding. Would it actually be permissible to remove rocks?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And there are some areas, for example, out in the east near Blythe, south of Blythe, there's a geode bed. And that is an area where some, as long as it's not like commercial scale, if somebody wants to just go out and do some rock hounding and pick up some geodes, that level is okay. There is some more specification that is being developed for the Mojave National Monument with respect to that. But the kind of rock hounding that we're talking about is like me going out there looking for geodes, and it's not a commercial scale. So.
I have a question too. So for the mining, is it lithium that they're mining out there right now? What's going on there in terms of mining?
There isn't any active's commercial mining in this area. The lithium mining is more to the, let me just. So the, this is the area, oh gosh. I can't get it to, it just keeps bouncing. That may be my fault. But anyway, there's a boundary sort of up around there, the Salt and Sea, down at the southern end of the Salt and Sea is the primary lithium area. And the boundary of the monument, if you can see, is north of that gray area. So there really isn't any commercial active mining going on in the area this time.
Current mining would still be allowed.
It would be allowed, but yeah.
Is there anything going on?
The only mining that's going on is some small-scale, what would be considered sort of recreational mining. It's not commercial scale. So there are some mining folks that go out prospecting and so on, and that would still be, if they have a valid claim, that would be allowed.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So just some of the values of the area. One of the major benefits of this area is there's tremendous cultural resources. There are 13 tribes that consider this part of their, parts of the monument as part of their homeland. This is Corn Spring, where you can see there's some spectacular rock art. And actually, as of today, I think there's six or seven of those tribes, including the Torres Martinez and the 29 Palms that have written letters of support. There's a proposal as part of this proposal. There's an element of this proposal which would have the tribes be involved in a co-stewardship or co-management agreement, arrangement with BLM, so they could have more participation in working with those lands, which I think is an exciting prospect. There's some tremendous historical sites. The photograph in the top is General Patton's old training camps from World War II. And you can still see some of the remnants of those training camps, and we wanted to make sure that those areas are not just preserved, but highlighted and a place where people can really kind of see some of the amazing numbers of troops that spent time out there in the desert during the early parts of World War II. And then it's a tremendous area for wildlife, especially wildlife undercrossing, desert tortoises, the bicorn sheep, and of course, that gorgeous little Chukwala lizard, the namesake of the monument. Lots of tremendous habitat. These are the desert lilies, and the pink flower is a plant that grows only in that area called the Meccaaster. The recreational values are very diverse, are probably very, very popular. Some of us know about that. Hiking, some of you may be familiar with Painted Canyon and the Box Canyon area. This is Ladder Canyon, which is a tremendously popular hiking area. Question I actually heard today was, the Coachella Valley Hiking Club actually maintains the ladders that are in these canyons. And somebody said, well, they still be able to do that? And certainly, that would be, I mean, these are, I think, one of the real elements that we're looking for with this monument is the recreational benefits and the opportunities for all kinds of diverse recreation, whether it's in a vehicle or on foot. The Bradshaw Trail is a historic trail that was part of the old Gold Road to La Paz Trail, which is now a popular trail for four-wheel drive. And then there've been some studies that have taken a look at the economic benefits of these national monuments over 25 years. And there does show a demonstrated increase in small business and economic activity associated with tourism. And in our sort of ecotourism-based economy, we see this as a benefit. Local support, we've gotten resolutions of support from a number of local cities. We're continuing that effort to reach out and really get feedback and support. But at this stage, we've gotten quite a bit of that.
Can I trouble you to go back to the slide on the economic benefits?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
How were these numbers determined? Is this overall for the Coachella Valley? Would this be per city? Is this, that would go towards Blythe because it's the closest city? Where do these numbers come from?
This particular study was done for a larger area of national monuments in the West. 25-year period, I believe, that they looked at. And they were essentially looking at, a lot of the national monuments are these small communities kind of like Blythe or kind of like Mecca that could benefit from being a gateway to these areas. So it was really looking at more rural communities in many of the areas where national mines, but it's all over the Western United States, not just here.
Thank you. I appreciate context.
Yep. Happy to provide more background if you'd like it. So local support, a lot of different organizations as well. Right now, we're working hard to get letters of support from local businesses, especially in the East Valley and Coachella and Mecca and communities that are very close to the area. And so that's going forward. This effort is really part of a coalition, but I want to just briefly update you with regard to where the proposal is now. Senator, excuse me, Congressman Raul Ruiz introduced legislation to the House in September of 2023 and announced that he would be a champion of this effort. And then just a couple of weeks ago, on April 16th, Senator Padilla and Butler from California and Congressman Ruiz actually reintroduced legislation, had a press conference in Washington, DC. And at that same time, so they have a House bill and a Senate bill, but they also submitted a letter to President Biden requesting that he use the Antiquities Act to designate the proposed national monument. The Antiquities Act was actually approved by Teddy Roosevelt, and he designated quite a number of national monuments, including the Grand Canyon, which started out as a national monument, ultimately became a national park. So over the time period from that, there's been actually a lot of national monument designations that have been made by presidential proclamation. So that's kind of the focus of the effort at this time by this group of organizations. And actually, the next step for the effort, as we continue to gather support, is for there to be a public meeting sometime. That may happen sometime this summer, where a representative from the Department of Interior would come out and have a public meeting for input and comment about the proposal. And so there's a website for more information, and I'd be happy, oh, I just want to really briefly mention, this is Adomari Kota, who's a member of a group of youth, of young people that were brought on board through an effort we call the Chukwala Youth Ambassadors. It's a program that was established as part of this effort. Six young people from, mostly from the East Valley, have gotten on, involved in this effort, and they've been like making speeches and gathering signatures. Actually, Adomari went to Washington, DC with a coalition, including a couple elected representatives. And it's really great to kind of hear their voice when it comes to the significance of areas like this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do have one question. When you talked about the pump storage project, is that the Eagle Mountain project?
Yes, yes.
And I do want to mention also that when this came up in front of Visit Greater Palm Springs, I voted against it only because I wasn't sure if there were easements and right-ofways for utilities. And that concerned me. As we struggle getting our utilities out so that we can build homes, I didn't want another obstacle. I have been more than adequately assured that all of that is taken care of, and we can be comfortable that if we need to run utilities so that we can build and accommodate our community members, that that will happen. So thank you. And this kind of completes the crown around the Coachella Valley.
Absolutely. I love that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor and City Council, I just want to make sure you are aware, there is a companion item, item 9M, on the consent calendar to adopt the resolution of support.
Thanks very much. Oh.
Okay, this is a quick question, going back to the economic impact that our mayor asked about. The numbers were, it was substantial, like $5 billion for lodging, et cetera, et cetera. That's not annually? Or is that, I think you mentioned over a 25-year period, or?
I think so. Let me check on that and get the specifics, because I don't recall them offhand. But it did include a larger area. It was really looking at over the sort of longer term for national monuments in the Western US.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Which one is up next?
Okay, I'd like to ask Nick Maloney to provide the council a quick briefing on a forthcoming mobility element update. Need for a purpose, wanted to be sure that you understood what we're working on and why. So Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the City Council, Nick Maloney of the Planning Division. So the purpose of the study session is to really introduce you to staff's action plan for an amendment to the mobility element of the general plan and receive any input that you may have. So there are a few factors that are really driving the need for this update, which include internal consistency among various city plans and efforts which are ongoing. That includes the city's Active Transportation Plan, the CIP, or Capital Improvement Program for Walk and Roll, and Bike and Golf Cart Plan. Just to make sure that the general plan is consistent and supporting of those ongoing efforts. Other updates will include for consistency for the traffic impact analysis guidelines, so that incorporates some updates based on state law. Other changes to state law to evaluate how we assess or evaluate traffic impact from new developments and ensure that we have standard details or the information to ensure that future planned roadways are built in accordance to the standards that the council wishes to see. So to address these issues, planning staff will enter into a contract with a city-approved vendor, who's Fair and Peers. They're a traffic engineering consultant who prepared the original traffic analysis for the general plan. And they would be amending the current general plan to expand it, to include some additional policies. They would conduct some safety assessment of existing conditions, evaluate existing travel demand on the model, and prepare updates to the transportation impact guidelines for vehicle miles traveled and make roadway network recommendations. So those updates will include all of these listed on the screens. I can go into these in detail, but we'll save that because I'll go into more detail in later slides.
Could I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
One of the items listed is transit system. Will there be good communication between our consultant and Sunline? Not just to understand the current transit system, but to assure that there's collaborative planning. They, of course, have travel demand models, so to the extent we're developing travel demand models, it would seem efficient to make sure that the left hand and the right hand are working together.
Absolutely. The intent of the circulation element is to evaluate the whole of transportation and options and update our general plan to provide those supporting policies to ensure any future expanses to transit are consistent with our anticipated demand and need, as well as supporting expansions in the future. And of course, they'll also prepare an updated SEQA analysis, because we love SEQA. I'll just go into a brief background on general plan. So as you know, a general plan is a comprehensive, long-term planning document that's required for all cities in the state. There's nine mandatory elements, seven of which apply to Palm Desert, and the circulation element is one of those elements. It is intended to just identify the general location and extent of existing and future traffic circulation in the city. And our general plan was adopted in 2016, and there was an amendment to the circulation element in 2016 to accommodate CV link. So it does that. Just real quick here, this is an exhibit taken from the circulation element. You'll see on the left-hand side of the screen a map that is color-coded and identifies where streets can go and what those streets would look like. On the right-hand side, you have an example of a current cross-section, which includes bike lanes, raised median sidewalks, and transit. It also covers alternative modes of transportation. So this is taken from the bicycle plan. So this shows the planned golf carts and bike amenities in the city, which takes us to the first issue that drives the need. So, for example, a general plan must be internally consistent. What we're seeing in our current general plan is an inconsistency between some of these cross-sections and then the bike plan, which poses issues for findings of general plan consistency on other ongoing efforts. So the plan here would be to amend it so that these plans are internally consistent. What we've highlighted there is just an example showing a separated bike lane, whereas on the same area on the traffic plan, it shows a painted lane. So the intent would be to establish what is the real plan there to make sure it's consistent. Another example of inconsistency, we have two versions of the ultimate plan for Highway 111. This would be evaluated to examine what is the true intended plan for Highway 111 going forward. On the top, we have the cross-section taken from the circulation element or mobility element. And on the bottom, we have a Chapter 10. So as you can see, there are some differences between those, and this effort would aim to correct those. There's also a need to ensure that our circulation element reflects the whole extent of the network. So for example, we have on the left here, a screen capture from the circulation element. But we note that it does not include the plan for the extension of Technology Drive, which is included in a separate specific plan. So it is consistent, but just to make sure that the general plan reflects the whole of the city's planned circulation network, we would correct this. There are also a number of legislative updates that have happened since 2016 that we have to account for. One of those bills is SB 932, which is the Plan for the Future Bill, which is generally a plan. It requires all cities and general plans to incorporate Vision Zero policies. Vision Zero is, of course, safety, which we are currently embarking on an ongoing effort for Vision Zero. The general plan would ensure that those policies are incorporated in and consistent with that effort. SB 743 requires that cities evaluate traffic impact from new development based on a metric known as vehicle miles traveled versus existing level of service. We would add policies for vehicle miles traveled, but still retain the level of service policies that are currently in place, so that we're evaluating projects based on both, but primarily VMT, but we still have policies for LOS. SB 330, I'll go into detail, but that is the Housing Accountability Act, and it limits what cities can evaluate for housing projects based on objective standards. So again, Vision Zero, this would just establish the policies for the safety component as required by state law. That'll go into effect into 2025, so we'll be a little bit ahead of the curve on that. SB 743 will just implement VMT policies and metrics, and we'll establish updated guidelines and a traffic model that implements vehicle miles traveled. For the Housing Crisis Act, the intent here is just to add additional details to the cross-sections in the general plan so that it's much more specific and we can enforce what's specifically shown. So an example of that will be shown here. This is the current cross-section for the Balanced Arterial, which is very general. It shows the number of lanes, shows. It shows the number of lanes, shows landscaping, on-site parking. But what it would need to be updated to show are these dimensions so that when we are working with developers and conditioning projects, that we can enforce what's already in our general plan and from that build off and create engineering standards. This is important so that we can obtain adequate right-of-way, which would influence setbacks and things of that nature. So it's, it's necessary for review of projects going forward as a means of streamlining them. So, but with that, that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions you may have.
No questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Maloney. That was very informative. Yes, many, many thank yous for, for all you do and all of the community meetings that have gone into it. There are.
Yeah, I'm just happy you caught it before it was caught during a development time when we were working with the developers so that we can get that straightened out, do our best work. Thank you.
Okay, if there is nothing else, I believe the last portion of our study session is information regarding library policies. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. Delighted to be with you here today to speak about library policies, those that are proposed. This is obviously an informational item. We will return to you later with a recommendation for adoption. So library policies are in place to create a safe and welcoming environment for our patrons and staff, where applicable, library policies follow city ordinances and policies. Oh, I should say on this, so just based, it's not a scientific study, but based on my own personal experience and that of Shannon's, 96% of people can follow the policies to the letter. Many don't even, aren't aware that there are policies and they still manage to follow them. It's just that special 4% that we have to have policies in place for. So I'm not going to read these all to you, but this is a list of all the policies we're planning to enact for the library. And we have drafts of those in your documents now, but I am going to highlight five of those. So first up is our circulation policy, which focuses on equal access to materials. Libraries are about providing access and about removing barriers so that folks can access the information that they need. While our code of conduct, again, libraries are safe and welcoming spaces by having a code of conduct that supports, you know, the community and staff, it provides for a much smoother operation of, of the library. Collection development, our collection development policy guides staff and supports decision-making when it comes to material acquisitions. We aim to provide a robust and broad collection. The Palm Desert Library is going to be a popular library. It is not an academic library. It does not offer all books that are published today. No library can really do that, not even the Library of Congress. In the 1950s, a medium-sized urban library could provide every book that was available. So it's up to professional staff to really choose, you know, what, what is best for our community and folks can also make suggestions. The mobile library, the Bookmobile policy will mirror that of the city's fleet policy and include guidance on visits and appropriate use of the vehicle, whether that be to schools, community events, and where it can be driven. And then our security camera policy just refers back to the city's policy on that topic. In summary, library policies align with the modern library practices and provide guideposts for the smooth operation of the library. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I'm joined with, by library staff who can also answer questions if I am unable to.
Right, thank you. And that was what, 37 pages? Quite a bit of work. So thank you very much for putting all that together. Has this been run by our city attorney? And is that an important thing that we're going to do?
It will be run by the city attorney. But right now, these policies, we basically scanned out and went and looked at best practices across library systems. So absolutely, they will be run by the city attorney.
Perfect, thank you.
I do have a few questions. In terms of reinforcing that circulation means equal access, will there be a length of time that you'll place something on hold?
As far as someone can place something on hold is as far as how long it will take to get?
Yes, if I say I'm going to reserve a book in two weeks and then I forget and I go out of town for three weeks, how long can that book sit on hold?
So typically, the book would sit about eight days on hold. But our catalog will offer us the opportunity for someone to freeze a hold so that then it's basically made for exactly that purpose. You're going out of town. And so then you can literally pick it up and not lose your place in the queue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And in terms of the application, it says, "The extension by public library of its direct loan privileges to the eligible borrowers of all other public libraries." Does this mean reciprocity with Palm Springs, Ranch Mirage, or other places outside of Riverside County?
It actually extends across the state of California. And that's really something that's demanded by the California State Library Act so that we provide reciprocity to other borrowers. The way we do that is they would be able, they would be eligible to get a Palm Desert card. But we plan to actually, I think we went for really friendly policies. And so folks that are visiting, that are out of state, we're not planning on charging them to access the collection. So they will, they will also be able to borrow at our library.
That's great news. And the electronic card, is that something that will come in the future?
It is. We are planning to launch a library app and someone can put their library, library card number directly into that. And then they will always have their card with them wherever they go. We're actually going to encourage people to, as that kind of be the first line for the card. But many people don't have smartphones, children don't have smartphones. Anyone who wants a physical card can get a physical card.
Thank you. And that is it for my questions. Anybody else going once, going twice? Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Schaefer. I wanted to reiterate how much fun it was to be at the ribbon-cutting for the Bookmobile with Mayor Protem and I. And I know that Councilmember Truby wanted to be there, but his other commitments overlapped. I'm looking forward to working with your staff. Well, it just fit into our schedule. But in terms of the committees that he serves on, it just seemed appropriate for, for him to, to be there. The staff is, is great. I love their energy. I loved hearing them interact and answer questions. I am thoroughly looking forward to how this will evolve. And thank you all for taking on such a big task with such a quick turnaround.
Well, thank you all for your support, the other departments, and every good library director has a great staff. There they are. And they really did the lion's share of the work in putting the policies together and doing the research on them. So thank you.
Is there anything else?
That is it for today.
Thank you so much. We conclude our study session at 3:21.